First item on our agenda is the Planning Commission report, and before he gets into that, I think Mr. Tyndall has a couple of announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two upcoming meetings in August, and I just wanted to invite you all, as well as anyone listening, to these two open house workshops that we have. The first is going to be on the 19th of August at Minglewood Elementary School. Remember, a couple of months ago, we had the first round of the Britton Springs Area Plan. This will be the follow-up meeting with preliminary recommendations, and then we'll have a final one in a little later, probably in October, with the final recommendation. So, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Minglewood Elementary for that one. And then, on 27th of August, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, at the RPC Basement Meeting Room, this is where our first two chapters of the zoning code rewrite will be available in draft form. This is the uses, the size of the lots, the bulk variances, that type of stuff will be in there. Again, both of these documents should be released about a week before those meetings, so that you can look at them, and we'll make sure those get out to the public. Hope to see you at some of these.
Okay, first item is Ordinance 5202526. Mr. Tyndall?
I was going to say, enjoy this month, because we have up to 10 cases next month. We'll see how that goes.
You're out of order.
So, tonight, we just have two zoning cases and one ordinance. First one is Z292025, application of Charles Thomas Gerald's, 2.88 acres, currently zoned C2, general commercial district, requesting C5 highway and arterial commercial district. It is an extension of the C5 across the street. This is a property on the corner of Bellamy Lane and Warfield Boulevard, and it's a slightly sloped tract of land with no structures on it. This is in Council Ward number 11, and it's in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area. Applicant's statement is this rezone request allows more commercial options for the requested property. This is an extension of the zone across Warfield and is similar to the surrounding areas. This is from our land use plan, and this intersection, because of its expansion in the last several years, and the five-lane road on both ends, we called it a regional node. It's got some regional uses out there, which C5 is appropriate in this area. This property did have some previous zoning history back in 2000 and 2009. Half of it was rezoned to C2, and then the other half was zoned to C2. So, 25 years since the first rezoning, and nothing's been done with the property. Here it is, as you turn off Warfield Boulevard. I will note, even though it touches Warfield Boulevard, you cannot access it at that corner. There's a big ditch detention system where those trees are there, so the access will be off Bellamy. Looking back toward Warfield, property is on the left there. This is the upper end of the property, looking down at the gas station and car wash that is on the back end of that property. We did not receive any department comments or concerns. Staff does recommend approval. This request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The C5 highway and arterial commercial zoning classification aligns with the regional commercial future land use of the adopted comprehensive plan. The request is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and no adverse environmental issues were identified. The Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Any comment or question from Council? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, so, we've received emails about this. I believe the next case is being developed by the same person. Have there been any discussions, this is probably a Street Department question, actually, about having an access road to tie into where the gas station is, so that it's an intersection, merging into the intersection that's signalized, instead of dumping more traffic on Bellamy?
So, this is the zoning case. We've not seen a site plan for this one yet, and yes, the other case is on the other side of Bellamy to the north. That's something we will explore, but it's hard to, when properties aren't owned by the same people, or not sharing an access like that car wash and the gas station does, it's easier to have them share access. It's harder to say, oh, now you have to go back to that gas station and get access through them. It's more of a private agreement at that point. We'll attempt it, but we'll have to have them negotiate with the gas station, but we'll support that and write whatever letters we can to do that. I don't know what they have in mind for this property. I've not seen a plan, and all they stated was future commercial opportunities, but I agree that that is the better place to access Warfield Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of them. I guess I would classify them as minor concerns. Comments from Street Department, no comments at this time. Sounds like to me that they're reserving a comment possibly for later, and then the same thing on billing codes, no questions or comments at this time. This is the time to be commenting, because once we say yea or nay, then the comments are over. That's all. Thank you.
Sure. And not to comment for them, and they might be able to nod, but I think that's based on, we don't know yet what the site plan will hold, and depending what the use of this property, this 2.8 acres, is in the future, they may have comments at the site plan development phase.
Councilman Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So, there's no site plan, and with C5, I mean, they could do some pretty massive developments there, couldn't they?
It's just under three acres. If you look south of the road right there, right across Bellamy, that's two, that's like an autoglass and an autobody place. Those are actually zoned to C2 currently, so they're old, non-conforming. That's what you can do in that area as well. You know, massive is a relative term, but three acres, you could do strip center, a little warehouse.
Relatively speaking, right? And then, you know, if we don't have a guarantee that they're not going to connect to the gas station and come out at the intersection, that's a really, really busy intersection, and so, you know, then we have to assume that they're going to come out of Bellamy Lane, so it's like, I don't know why we would vote for that, you know?
Yeah. Similar to the case you had last month at Concord, it's already C2, it's just going to C5, so takes a few uses away, adds a few uses to it. They're both commercial uses, and they both have very similar impacts. And as it is right now, it would get one driveway, but we definitely will explore that opportunity to go to the intersection.
Yeah, that'd be definitely preferable, but thank you.
Any more comment or question? Thank you. Now, ready for Item B, Ordinance 6202526. Mr. Tyndall?
All right. Running across Warfield Boulevard, we have Z302025 at the end of Bellamy Lane to the north. This is an application of Donnie Ray Plaster and Karen Kay Plaster. This is 3.96 acres, currently zoned AG Agricultural. It's two parcels, and it's requesting to go to R4 multifamily residential district. It is an extension of the multifamily to the north and to the east. The property is attractive land encompassing two parcels at the eastern terminus of Bellamy Lane. The applicant's statement is for a town home development. This is also in Council Ward number 11. This is our future land use map, and it's a very busy part of it. So, we just run the regional commercial there to the left where it's dark red, then you slip into the lighter yellow for suburban neighborhood. To the north is a mixed-use area around the hospital. To the east, in that darker yellow, is mixed residential. Then you have the park there and open space. So, a little bit of everything going on here. And the zoning map as well, has a lot going on as well. You even have an old PUD in the hatched areas there, to the east and to the south, C2, R4, and still some ag out there. The big chunk of ag south of this is the Civitan Park. This is the end of Bellamy Lane, looking back, properties to the right and to your rear, and then the entry to Civitan Park. And then, looking into the property. Comments and questions? There's no sewer available, but it can request an extension, and there was a trip generation produced for the Street Department, and it was deemed acceptable, and the school system provided comments about their capacities at the Rossview School complex. Historical estimates would put this at 47 units. The applicant provided, and it might, should be in your packet, the applicant provided a plan that showed 58 units, so still below the 16 units an acre, but above what we typically see around the 12, 12.2 units an acre, because it's a fairly flat piece of land. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request, and I apologize, I got the wrong one there. Well, we're requesting, we are recommending approval. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. There is an extension to the east and to the north, and it's next to the park, which we thought was a good place for multifamily housing, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Councilman Chigenev, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've received some emails. I know I have received a lot of emails from residents on both sides of this proposed development, off of Stoke Court, where all the apartments and townhomes are, as well as some of the residents off of Bellamy Lane. The concern the residents have is the traffic right there on Bellamy Lane. You have some pockets of residential to the west of this proposed development, and then further west, you have some apartments that managed to get approved and developed over there. But the residents right now, those residents that are there, they are already feeling the pressure of the traffic right there at Bellamy Lane. And then, of course, the other way on Stoke Court, that, you know, that was probably a possibility at one time, but those residents, they're not for that either. So, this is going to be a tough one.
I don't know if you watched the Planning Commission meeting. We did discuss the Stoke Court issue, and it arises from the concept plan that the developer put without even contacting that development. They wanted to extend the driveway of another townhouse development. We would not require that. Now, they can go negotiate it, and if they work that out with the homeowners' association, by all means, fine. But we've not seen this plan, we've not approved this plan, and that's what the homeowner's president came and spoke against it, and said, we don't want this connection. We've never talked about this connection, and I told her we wouldn't make this connection unless they agreed to it. So, I think we've calmed that concern down, is that there is no access to Stoke Court. The county blocks that with an automatic gate from the park, except open during baseball times, and then it closes at night and during the day. So, the traffic does have to go out Bellamy, and during the evening for baseball season, it will open up Stoke Court at night, so that you can get into the back end of the parking lots there.
Councilman Haywood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my concern is coming from CMCSS, with the Rossview being at 114% with 11 portables. Their comment said that the development adding additional students could require additional infrastructure and funding. If this were to be approved, would the funding come from both the county and the city? Would they be requesting additional funding from us? Do you know how that would work with CMCSS?
Yeah, and I'm sure the mayor will answer too. The county helps, or county does fund the school system.
Okay.
No funding from the city directly.
I think we do too with taxes, right?
Yeah, we give half the sales tax collected in the city to the school system, in addition to a few other things, and some infrastructure that we do around sidewalks and other things that are left out.
I was just concerned with, if we were to add this many, you know, people to this, even if they weren't elementary school age, even a little bit with the lack of bus drivers, I don't know how much strain that would put on Rossview. But that was my only question, is what would that require from us if this were to be built, you know, next year, whatever it would be? But, all right, thank you.
Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just kind of want to add to the comment on the previous speaker is that I did look into this, spoke with the individuals who are trying to develop this. What I'm told is that their plan is to actually build a hybrid assisted living for seniors, individuals with disabilities. I don't really think the school system comments would apply if that's what they're building, because there aren't really going to be children living there. And this particular developer seems to have a pretty good track record on building what they tell us that they're going to build. So, yeah, it's not, the school system comments aren't really a concern based on that, to me. Thank you.
Any more comment or question? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Just to kind of add on what the previous speaker said, we have to remember when we vote for a zoning classification, we need to plan for worst-case scenario, because there's no such thing as conditional zoning. So, just because somebody says they're going to do something now, doesn't mean that the property can't change hands, and you end up with something totally different, and some of us have lived through that before. So, just want to, you know, make that statement clear. Thank you.
Any more comment or question? Thank you. We're ready for Item C, Ordinance 4202526. Mr. Tyndall, please, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This text or change to the zoning ordinance, been a little bit of a long time coming. It started back in December 2023, and then we paused it while we did the Fort Campbell and Tiny Town overlays, because it would apply to these areas. Back in December 23, the Common Design Review Board was asked to approve an LED digital reader board exemption on Madison Street. Well, Madison Street doesn't allow that currently, has not allowed it. Any LED signs that aren't government-owned have been grandfathered in that district, and the board denied it, but said they'd like to look into whether or not it was permissible to allow schools and churches to have them. Shortly thereafter, the businesses also took umption to some signs that were put up recently by non-private entities, and the Planning Commission voted to initiate that ordinance to look after all the businesses on Madison Street, to look at what can we do to provide for electronic message centers. So, what is an electronic message center? It is an LED sign that provides words, or text, or pictures, and they do have opportunities to move and have motion, and they can change frequently, and that's an electronic message center. We have a lot in the city already, and this ordinance originally started with three main parts. The Planning Commission split the question, I think it's the first time in my history there that we've done that, and they voted to defer one of the sections to next month, so I hopefully will be bringing in the rest of this next month. What is before you today is the allowance of electronic message centers in the Madison Street sub-district, as well as the Tiny Town and Fort Campbell district, up to 50% of their approved signage. So, in Madison Street, you get a 50-foot freestanding sign. You could have 25 feet, up to 25 feet, as an electronic message center, and then 25 feet of other sign.
Is that square feet?
Square feet, yes. And it can only be 20 feet tall. I'll put it there, too. And a lot of this plays off of the second reading of the ordinance in Tiny Town and Fort Campbell Boulevard. That allows 100 square feet, so you could have 50 square feet of an electronic message center with 50 feet of static, regular sign. If you choose to use a monument sign, that can only be 30 square feet, six feet tall, no, sorry, four feet tall. We allow 60% of that, or 18 square feet, could be an electronic message center, with 12 feet being the name of the business, or the name of the strip center, or whatever is there. In addition, what we're going to also do, and this really gets back to, you'll see the signs where they had the individual plastic letters, that's called a changeable copy sign. Some companies aren't even making those letters anymore, and that's why you'll see sometimes mismatched letters, or the number three is being used as a W sometimes. We have added an opportunity in Madison Street to take those signs and convert them to electronic message centers, so long as they're not bigger than the existing are, and they're at less than 25 square feet. So, it gives those opportunities to some of the churches and some of the businesses that have those copy signs, may or may not be using them. Gives them the opportunity, they'd come through our office, we'd check the size and approve that. The section that got deferred dealt with citywide regulations on electronic message centers, and I will just give you a preview of next month. When the city started allowing these in the 90s and early 2000s, you probably should have put the guide rails in then about what to do and how to approve these. We have no rules right now on electronic message centers. These are not billboards, these are the ones that are out there on individual businesses. So, that's been deferred, so we can work a little longer with the businesses on just how long does it get to animate, how long does it have to pause, things that everyone's in agreement with. It has to dim at night, dim in bad weather, the proposed size of these signs, and a couple of the other items everyone's in agreement with. We're down to about 2 and 1/2 of the 12 points that we just need to hammer out with a few people and business owners, and just get a little more clarification. But we will bring that back, hopefully, next month. The last part of this ordinance deals with rope lighting and sight lighting on properties that have, and this is your parking lighting, your security lighting, or your advertising lighting. It should be directed downward and not cast light pollution on other properties. It can't go into the right-of-way, and it shouldn't strobe, chase, or flash. That's all that's contained today. So, again, the citywide regulations would not be in place, but the allowance of on Madison Street, Tiny Town, Fort Campbell, and the sight lighting would be, is what's up for vote. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, I'm sure there will be. Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's not so much as a question, as stating that I am supportive of both portions of this ordinance that's before us in regards to the Madison Street design overlay. Mr. Tyndall can attest to the fact that this part is something that him and I have talked about for some time, and had even considered including it when we were adding the additional area of Martin Luther King Boulevard, but based on the fact that there was already a citywide ordinance in effect, the thought process was to hold it, to do it all together. And so, I am grateful that this portion is still coming forward. But as he mentioned, you know, there's some difficulties with the businesses along there. I was initially reached out to from one of the churches on Madison Street. Most of the people that work there are older individuals, and having to try and climb up on a ladder to be able to change the letters on there was obviously a difficulty for them. By allowing these LED signs, this will essentially modernize what you have available on Madison Street. And then, as was referenced, that there are a couple of government signs along Madison Street. Once those went up, I did start also hearing from business owners wanting to be able to do the same thing. So, with all the changes that have come about, and the updates that we have available in LED signs now, I think this is a good move, especially for Madison Street, to be able to allow this. And then, in regard to the light pollution that is referenced in the second portion of this ordinance, I'm grateful to see that included. I've had some complaints with some of the businesses that are located on Madison Street, that we do see doing the chasing and having multiple colors going around. So, I think this is a benefit for not only that area, but all of Clarksville. So, I would ask for your support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilman Chandler?
Thank you, Mayor. I talked with Mr. Tyndall about that this afternoon. My only concern is, is I'm sorry that we messed up in the 90s and the early 2000s, but as long as we don't cost a business some money. I don't want to see us going back and penalizing somebody, well, you've got to sign up, you can't do that anymore, tear it down, go get, put a replacement out, three or four thousand dollars. I just don't want to see that happen. I wish you would expand more, though, on this parking lot lighting and stuff, because if you've ever driven 101st 374, midnight, you come over the overpass over Wilma Rudolph, it's lit up down there, you can hardly see. And so, you know, are we going to say that, who's going to do the enforcement on that? My question, you know, it's just, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it can't spill over into the right-of-way?
Direct it out into the right-of-way.
Well, we need to have a strong, serious look at that, because a vast majority of the businesses in this town have them pointing to the edge of the right-of-way, and I'm sure that they're going over into the right-of-way. On one hand, though, I can see where, well, we're lighting the street up a little more. But then, on the other hand, you know, I've always been against, I don't understand why a car dealership at 2:00 in the morning has to have enough lights on to play football, because nobody's going over there looking at cars. Thank you.
Any other comment or question regarding this ordinance? All right. Item D, Ordinance 111, Mr. Tyndall? I think we've already addressed that.
Oh, yes, sorry. That's from last month. That was deferred. Let me pull up last month's cases.
We did postpone that.
Yes.
In July.
And that's the case on Concord Drive. That was an application by Running M Properties to go from C2 to R2A, and it is 10.04 acres. The Planning Commission did see a subdivision this month, and did preliminarily approve it pending the zoning change, and it had 38 single-family houses on it, and accessed through a existing house onto Concord across from Richmond. I'll be happy to answer any other questions, but I know this was deferred last month to just get a little more information from the Street Department, and I think because the preliminary subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission, the Street Department has been able to look at it.
Do you have questions? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Cowan. For years, there's been concern about the signalized intersection at Fort Campbell Boulevard and Concord and West Concord not having a left-turn signal, and with adding more traffic coming on to Concord Drive, would that be something that could be triggered by adding the left-turn signal going on Fort Campbell Boulevard in both directions?
Sure. So, whenever the full site plan comes through for comments, we'll include with any assessment that's made against that. If we see that, we see that either it's the impacts through the assessment recommends that, yeah, we'll make that comment on the plot.
Okay, thank you, because right now, it's like you're trying to decide if somebody's coming straight or turning left. A lot of times, we're having to hover in the intersection to figure out if a car's coming at us or turning.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Councilman Chandler?
Now, I just want to make a statement about this. This is in my ward, and I did receive at the very beginning several complaints, but then, when we explained to them that, hey, you let this go in like they want to change it, or you could wind up with a truck stop there, and you're picking the lesser of two evils. And all but one, and I'll say nine phone calls, was satisfied with that. You know, once we explained to them, if you leave it like it is, this could happen, but if we change it, this is what's going to happen. So, yeah, I think it's be a good idea.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just my comments about it is, you know, going from the C2 to the R2, you know, it will have less density than what could go there, maybe not a truck stop, but apartments or something. My only concern is, is the people that buy those houses that are on the bottom of his site plan kind of design, you know, it's got that flood area down there, and what's going to happen is people are going to build their houses, they'll build the houses there, they'll sell them off, and down the road, they'll be like, well, my backyard's flooding. And, which in this plan, it shows, yes, that is the flood area, but, you know, people put fences up in those areas, and then the flooding comes, and it captures all the debris and backs water up even higher. That's just my concern with the design, is, you know, people not realizing that their backyard is actually a flood area, and then coming back later on down the road and saying, you know, y'all approve this. Well, we approved it, but in the design, it shows that's the flood area, and just looking out for the benefit of the people that buy it, you know, wish there was a way to make sure they knew that this part is flood down here, you know, instead of just them relying on, us relying on them to look at a layout and the design going, you know, they have to catch it theirself. So, that's just my only concern. It's, I mean, it's less density than what they could do now, but just looking for the future.
Yeah, and what you're seeing there on that map is the top of bank and Yeah, and what you're seeing there on that map is the top of bank, and then there's a stream buffer on top of it of somewhere between twenty and thirty feet, again, with no filler structures. So it's even more of a safety valve, if you will. You're right, though. A lot of people do put up fences on their own real quick. I don't think it requires a permit in the city. And we had this problem in the county with the flooding back in February and in April, where there were some fences put up without anyone's knowledge in some areas that experienced flooding. And then it starts again backing it up, diverting the water, and causes issues around it. Thank you.
Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, referencing the density, would you remind us, since it has been a month, the difference in density allowable based on the current zoning and the requested zoning?
Sure. The requested zoning with the plan attached and the plan that was submitted to the Planning Commission and approved showed thirty-eight additional houses. And if the ten acres was left as C2 and went to multifamily, you're talking one hundred twenty to one hundred and sixty max, depending on the topography.
Okay. And even as it's currently stated using the same plan that's already been approved, then they could have thirty-eight units, or thirty-eight buildings still there, but as duplexes, correct?
It'd be a few less lots, but they could put duplexes in on the C2, and then it would be higher than the thirty-nine total units, and sixty units or so.
It was off my number. I apologize. All right, thank you.
Yeah, part of the challenge, the Street Department will have to issue a grading permit, and that's gonna require an extensive engineering to make sure that whatever the developer does doesn't impact surrounding properties. So there may be fewer than that. So, anyway, thank you. Mr. Tyndall, anything else?
That's all.
All right, thank you. We're ready for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, take a deep breath, get a drink of water, and you're recognized.
All right, here we go. All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and may be approved by one motion. However, a member of the council may request that an item be removed for separate consideration under the appropriate committee report. Ordinance ninety-eight, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Whitetail Development Partnership Property to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from CBP Properties to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one hundred, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Holly Point LLC to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one zero one, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from the Main Street Investments Tennessee Group, GP, to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one zero two, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from the River Chase LLC to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one zero four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. Ordinance one zero five, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the acquisition of real property for the purpose of providing transitional housing for families participating in the CMCSS Families and Tradition Program, Families in Transition Program. Ordinance one zero six, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Appalachian Service Project. Ordinance one zero eight, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Faith Investments, for a zone change on a parcel fronting on the western frontage of Alpine Drive, approximately four hundred twenty feet south of the West Dunbar Cave Road and Alpine Drive intersection from O1 Office District to M1 Light Industrial District. Ordinance one zero nine, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Christian Innovative Enterprises LLC, for a zone change on a parcel of land fronting on the northern frontage of Kennedy Road at the terminus of Stone Bluff Way and Kennedy Road, intersection from AG Agricultural District to R2A Single Family Residential District. Ordinance one twelve, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance of the City of Clarksville as it pertains to updating the Clarksville Design Overlay Districts to include Fort Campbell Boulevard and Tiny Town Road corridors. Resolution five, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, a resolution approving an appointment to the Power Board. Resolution six, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, a resolution renewing a retail liquor store certificate of compliance for Billy G. Brown for operation at Bill's Package Store located at sixteen fifty-one Fort Campbell Boulevard, and the adoption of minutes for June seventeenth, June twenty-fourth, June twenty-sixth, and July first.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comment or question regarding the consent agenda? We're now ready for the Finance Committee report. Chairman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance zero-two, two zero, two-five, two-six, first reading, an ordinance amending Part Two Code of Ordinances, Title thirteen, Utilities and Service, Chapter Three, Gas, Water, and Sewer Service, the City of Clarksville relative to ownership and maintenance of gas and water meters and services. Both the Finance and Gas and Water Committees voted in favor of approval. This ordinance is in reference to legislation with, on the federal side regarding what we heard about several months ago with lead pipes. It's always been a common practice here that in, across the utility of district that, and, well, water districts, that the responsibility of the city is up to the meter, the responsibility of the homeowner or property owner is from the meter and beyond. With the way this legislation has been written, it's not, it's kind of looking at things, should be looking at things differently, and it's not. It's different down in the South than it is in the North. In the North, they have a frost line, and therefore, they, and obviously much colder temperatures. Often, what you find there is that the meters are located inside the basements of the homes, whereas with us, it's not that way for the most part. So what we are doing is, again, it's been common practice, but we are putting this in writing that establishes and shows that we are only responsible as a city, or the Gas and Water Department is only responsible up to the meter.
Questions? Chairman Streitman?
Thank you. Ordinance oh-three, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into agreement for the purchase of easements and/or rights of way. Should negotiations fail to pursue condemnation through the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of property for a public purpose for the Liberty Park Sidewalk Phase Three project, the Finance Committee voted in favor of approval.
Questions or comments? Chairman Streitman?
Thank you, sir. Resolution oh-three, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, a resolution of the City of Clarksville to adopt the twenty twenty-five Montgomery County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Finance Committee voted in favor of approval. And this is, the hazard mitigation plan is created by Montgomery County EMA in partnership with the state and covers our entire jurisdiction. This plan is crucial for long-term disaster planning and strategy, as well as is a requirement of FEMA. This plan must be adopted by both City Council and the County Commission in order for the city to apply for and receive hazard mitigation grant funding. By adopting this plan, we are checking a crucial box to be able to continue to receive FEMA funding. You will see on page two a letter to our state hazard mitigation officer stating FEMA approves the contents of the plan pending adoption by local resolution.
Any comment or question? Chairman Streitman?
Resolution oh-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, a resolution approving the proposal of the Department of Transportation of the State of Tennessee to the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, for a road improvement project described as Trenton Road from near State Route three seventy-four to near I twenty-four, one A Route, State Route forty-eight. The Finance Committee recommended approval. This is in regards to plans from the state for sidewalks, streetlights, et cetera. And in order for us to be able to accept those improvements, we do need to pass this resolution.
Comment or question regarding this resolution? Chairman Streitman?
Thank you, Mayor. Next item on the agenda from the Finance Committee is the Hotel Motel Report. If you wouldn't mind, would you please ask Ms. Kristen Wilcox to come up here to present that information?
Ms. Wilcox, would you please? We're required by state law to report to the council quarterly the occupancy tax report, and that's what she's gonna give us. You're recognized.
You just stole my thunder. Thank you.
Okay, I withdraw my statement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, the city levied a two-point-seven-five percent hotel motel tax beginning January first, twenty twenty-five. The tax collected is dedicated to the Act Authority for Operations, Maintenance, and Debt Service to support the Tourism Development Authority. Wow, you can't see that, but hopefully in your paper you can. For the first half of calendar year twenty twenty-five, the city has collected just over six hundred and eight thousand dollars. If you could see them, they would be here. Also, here are our audit results. Like the mayor said, the state law requires the city to perform an audit of every hotel once a year and report those results to council quarterly. Currently, there are forty-six hotels within the city limits. In June twenty twenty-five, seven hotels were selected to be audited for January, February, and March. On this screen, you can see the results of those audits. Only one variance in this, in these audits was an underpayment. Most of them were overpayments. And for those variances, a letter will be emailed to the hotel to rectify the variance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comment or question? Chairman Streitman?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now ready for the Gas and Water Committee. Chairman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Our only order of business for council consideration is covered under the Finance Committee under Ordinance Two, and I will have a full report next week.
All right, thank you. Neighborhood and Community Services Committee Chairman Chikinev, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a full report next week.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have a full report next week, but I would like to bring the, some events to the, to public's attention. We've got Rhythm and Reals, Downtown Market, and Civil War Rations all on Saturday. Rhythm and Reals, this is the final one for the season, and we're watching Captain America. On the eighth, we have Dive-In Movie, IF. We've also got Nerf Wars and the Victorian Tea Party that are not before our next meeting, but will require advanced registration. And that concludes my abbreviated report.
Civil War Rations?
Civil, hard tack, maybe.
Okay, bring your own spoon, right? Okay, now ready for Public Safety Committee Chairman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have ordinance oh-one, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, an ordinance of the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, amending city code Title Ten offenses miscellaneous, Chapter One, Section ten dash one oh-one, certain misdemeanors under state law to adopt by reference state traffic offenses, rules of the road, and certain other misdemeanors. Public Safety Committee did approve this. With your permission, I'd like Mr. Griffin to come up for explanation and questions.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, if you don't mind, our city court clerk. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This Honorable Counsel. In order for a municipal court to have proper jurisdiction for motor vehicle violations, the City of Clarksville must comply, obviously, with the applicable case law and statutory law. The applicable statute here is TCA sixteen dash eighteen dash three oh-two, which states as follows: "A municipal court also possesses jurisdiction to enforce any municipal law or ordinance that mirrors, substantially duplicates or incorporates by cross-reference the language of a state criminal statute if and only if the state criminal statute mirrored, duplicated, or cross-referenced is a Class C misdemeanor, and the maximum penalty prescribed for municipal law or ordinance is a civil fine not in excess of fifty dollars." The key phrases here are mirrored, duplicated, or cross-referenced. So the most efficient means of complying with this jurisdictional requirement, statutory requirement, is to specifically itemize and detail those mirrored misdemeanors. By incorporating these cross-references, it makes it clear that the violation being heard by the city is certainly not a state criminal charge because we're a civil court. The updated Rules of the Road statute that we're proposing specifically states and itemizes each mirrored statute so that when somebody's charged with something, they know exactly what they're charged with. They're not, they're not guessing. You can't receive a ticket and it simply say, "Charged with ten one oh-one." And if you look at the ten one oh-one that we have now, the ordinance that we have now, it simply says, "All offenses against the state which are defined by state law to be misdemeanors punishable by a fine of fifty dollars or less and confinement for a period of thirty days or less are hereby designated and declared to be violations of the laws and ordinance of the city, and any such violation is also a violation of this section." Arguably, that's somewhat vague. So we want to clear that up, and we also want to clear it up because we don't have the authority to jail anybody. We have the authority to fine them fifty dollars. We can't put somebody in jail, so we don't have that jurisdiction. And it just really needs to be cleaned up. The primary reason for this is so that people know what they're charged with, and so that we don't cause any confusion. You know, they can look at their ticket and they can say, oh, I'm charged with that, and they can reference it in our ordinance, and then they can look at the state statute if they want to. They don't need to. Basically, this new ordinance provides compliance with the Municipal Court Reform Act and also with the City of Laverne versus LeQuire case, as well as clearing up any confusion between civil and criminal offenses that can be heard in the city court. And that's basically it. It's, it's a clarification process. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
We do. Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you going over that for us. I do have one question. As was referenced, you know, what's currently is rather vague, and now this is extremely specific with every single one of them going back to the Tennessee Code annotated. One concern that I have, is anybody going to be looking at this on a regular basis? Because the State of Tennessee, you know, does like to have fun making little changes, and one little change can put every one of these numbers off from what they are today. We've seen that in other things that we've done and referenced, the specific Tennessee Code annotated, and then it was different. In fact, we had to make some changes recently, and we were a little bit more vague in how we were referencing it. So, like I said, my main question would be is with every, with there being pages of these on here, is, is that something that somebody is going to be regularly checking so that we don't fall out of compliance with the next code?
Normally, I keep up with that.
Okay.
I generally do keep up with the state statutes that, that affect us.
Okay.
Or that we write tickets for because that's part of my job.
Okay.
So, yes, I'll be, I'll be watching it.
Okay.
And it's just best to be more specific, and if changes are required, then, and we may not need, quite honestly, we may not need all of those that are listed in there. We may not, we might not ever use every one of them, but we may in the future. And I don't want to have to redo this again.
No, I, I understand. I just, like I said, my concern was that what is fifty-five dash eight dash one sixty-five next year is fifty-five dash eight one sixty-nine, and so on and so forth, making towards not mirrored as, you know, as referenced. So, and that can be cleaned up every year. I just want, or every time it was changed, I just wanted to, to make sure that somebody was gonna be keeping up with that and bringing that to us to do that regular cleanup if it's necessary for us to have it this detailed and specific referencing those numbers.
I understand, Councilman Streitman, and, and I'm, I'm the one that's gonna be doing that, so.
That works for me. Thank you, sir.
Councilman McLaughlin, Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, you mentioned when you were explaining to this, this to us in great detail, which I appreciate. You had said that these will not be criminal charges. Would you entertain maybe us adding some language pertaining to that before first reading? So that it's clear that if somebody gets cited to city court, even though we all know they might not understand that it would not be something that would go on their criminal record because it's a $50 fine in municipal court.
I'd entertain that. I don't have a problem with that. And if you look at the very back of that statute, there are some, or this ordinance, there are some additional charges that we normally do not hear, but we are now allowed to hear because our population is over 150,000 people. For instance, reckless driving. We don't normally hear that. It's a Class B misdemeanor. You know, there are also some Class A misdemeanors here. Underage purchasing, possession or transportation of alcohol. Misdemeanor offense of, a Class A misdemeanor offense of underage consumption, possession or transportation of beer or any intoxicating liquor. Now, this doesn't cover DUIs or any of that. There's also a misdemeanor offense of underage purchasing or attempting to purchase any alcoholic beverage as set forth in fifty-seven dash three dash four twelve. A Class A misdemeanor offense of underage purchasing, attempting to purchase, possession of an alcoholic beverage. The, another Class A misdemeanor. I mean, there are several there. I could go through each one of them, but you've got them. And so it allows us to hear those cases as well. And if, if that's a concern to you, I'm certainly willing to entertain any amendments or discussion that you might want to have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we spoke at the committee meeting, you know, I brought up about the Class A misdemeanors that can carry jail time, but just making sure people understand that these that are charged in city court will be civil violations.
Yes.
I also talked to the district attorney and talked to him about it, and he's like, "Charged as a civil offense, he don't have to worry about it." He's, doesn't have a problem with it.
Oh, okay. Well, because I, I was under the impression that he wanted to talk to me about it, but I haven't heard from him, so.
Yeah, so I talked to him Friday.
Okay.
And talked to him a little bit about it.
Okay.
And my only concern is, you know, the city officers can charge either way. You know, they can charge it in city court or in state court.
That's correct.
So, yeah, I would just think that, you know, if there's a pattern of somebody that was charged more than once, had already had a history in city court and just paid their fine, and then they thought, "Well, I didn't just pay my fine and get away with it." Maybe the next time, they wouldn't need to be charged in state court.
Right, but that has nothing to do with jurisdiction. That's, that's officer discretion.
Right. So that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more comment or question for Mr. Griffith? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Lovato?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have a full report next week.
Thank you. Transportation, Streets and Garage, the chairman's, will have a report next week. We're now ready for new business. Resolution seven, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. A resolution to repeal. Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, amending the city of Clarksville Parks and Recreation user fees policy, appendix J, section fifteen, waivers, reductions and promotions. Should have let the sponsor read all this. Paragraph fifteen point four, city employee and family discount to clarify recreation privileges for sitting and former mayors and council members. Councilman Zacharias, you're the sponsor, and you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. In keeping with what seems to be a theme, this is another housekeeping resolution. While reviewing the city code of ordinances, I realized that there was a reference to this resolution, twenty-nine, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, that basically grants current and former city council members and mayors free use of Parks and Rec services in perpetuity with, with no expiration date. I had some concerns. I mentioned them to the city attorney. He agrees that, and please, if I'm speaking out of turn, please, please correct me, that this is likely a violation of the, the city's code of ethics. And I don't know if you've ever talked to a lawyer, but to have somebody that sure about something, a lawyer to be that sure about something before a judge has a chance to weigh in on it? I'm looking at the, the code of ethics right now. It says, "No employee shall make use of the facilities, equipment, personnel or supplies of the city for private use or gain except to the extent that its use is lawfully available to the general public." That seems pretty clear that this resolution, while, while it may have been passed in, in, in good faith, you know, fifteen years ago, should probably be taken out of, out of our city code. And I would ask for your support in, in doing that next week.
Questions regarding resolution seven? Councilman Streepman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Are we employees? Because I was kind of under the impression that we weren't employees, which is why we aren't eligible for insurance to utilize the clinic. Because I know I've asked that before in reference to the health clinic. So are we employees or not employees?
Councilman Zacharias?
So the city's code of ethics specifically explains that for the purposes of the city's code of ethics, we are considered employees.
Okay, so does that mean then we are eligible for the other items?
Code of ethics.
Code of ethics.
Okay, so in one area, we're employees, one areas we're not.
Depends on the day.
Okay, so one plus one does not equal two. All right, thank you.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, with, with this, deleting this ordinance, but we got to be careful. If, in, our city attorney is sitting there. If you're going to write something that says, "Well, in one aspect, you're an employee, but in this aspect, we're not going to consider you as an employee." You're either an employee or not. So, but like I said, I, I agree wholeheartedly with doing away with this ordinance, but we got to be careful saying one thing is a city employee and one thing is not. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more comment or question? All right, we're now ready for public comments. Any member of the public wish to address the, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Streepman?
Thank you. I do have another question. Do employees get a discount when that count as a gift or gratuity for our employees?
It's a legal question, Mr. Bittner. See, we almost got out of here, didn't we?
Sorry.
Pretty close. The, was the question, do the employees get a discount?
Employees, I believe, get a discount, and that would be a gift or gratuity.
Under the policy, the way it's written now, I believe they get a 15% discount for pool passes, pavilion rentals and select community centers, fitness classes, racquetball. That's the way it's written now.
So then my question would be, is that not a gift or gratuity for employees?
That is a benefit to their employment, so.
Okay.
We could, we could add that in there.
That's a benefit to their employment, but for, for them as employees, but for us as employees, that is, that's not a benefit, it's a gift or gratuity?
Well, the question that, that's, the question that was presented to me was the, with regard to the free privileges for the benefit of council members and, and former mayors. But the, this question, yes, we can add that to the employees. I was going to have a discussion with the director of Parks, Ms. Leterno, regarding that during this interim week, because I think we had some more modifications to it before, before we actually voted on it.
We have modifications to the resolution that's coming before us.
I think we'll have a, a modification to this resolution.
Okay, and now, obvious, and we're referencing this too now as we talk, former council members are not a, former council members, former mayors are not employees. So.
Well, the way the, the way the ethics.
I'll let you finish. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you. The way the ethics code was written, it, it references council members and mayors as.
I get that. I was only asking because we're saying that this is an ethical violation because we are employees. Of course, they're not employees. Like I said, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to connect all the dots here. And like I said, if it's a benefit for employees, I would think it would be a benefit for.
Former employees.
Well, benefit for council members. And I don't know that we can make that change current or if it would have to take effect four years from now.
Correct, and that's, that's what we were talking about this morning in our office, and that's why we wanted to talk with Ms. Leterno and, and then come back with Councilman Zacharias and perhaps amend the resolution before we actually vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't see this as a gift or gratuity. I see it as a benefit of employment as a city employee. So to me, a gift or gratuity is something that you're receiving from an outside, you know, supplier, vendor, not something that you get because you're an employee of the city. So I don't see it being any kind of violation of ethics because I, it's not a gift or gratuity to me, you know, to those that are the employees of the city. It's a benefit of their employment.
Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
That, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Any more comment or question regarding this resolution? All right, we're now ready for public comments. Any member of the public wish to address the council? We're now ready for mayor and council member comments. Councilman Streepman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's hard to tell from the extremely warm temperatures we've had outside, but summer for our school kids is essentially coming to an end, and next week they will be starting back to class. So I just want to remind everybody that those school zones are there for a reason, not just leading up to the school, but as you go past them, please be mindful of your speed as you're going through those, all the way through them. Also, please be on the watch out for the kiddos as they're waiting for their bus or walking to their bus or walking to school because we don't want to see anything happen. And I wish the kids that are returning and the, the staff and teachers that are going to have to go back, and that's to my fellow council member. I wish you a great new school year coming up.
And all the parents are rejoicing. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Amen to your previous comment. And my next town hall meeting will be on Monday, August 4th at 5:30 PM at the Clarksville District One precinct at 211 Cunningham Lane. All are welcome to attend. And then just a reminder that National Night Out is next Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Austin Peace for Terrace Stadium. This is put on with the United Way with support of the Clarksville Police Department. There'll be 56 vendors, free haircuts, free food, et cetera. Good time for everybody to come out and engage in the community on National Night Out that's held nationally across the country that same night. Thank you.
Councilman Chikina, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question for you, Mayor, just for the benefit of the public and the residents off of Dunbar Cave and all that. I've seen a lot of the emails regarding that. Is it, is it ready? Are we going to have it open next week for school? Or is it already?
Drum roll, please, Mr. Smith. Would you mind coming, giving us an update quickly?
This is an old man. This is an old man.
I'm sorry, did you say Chris County?